All right, I'd like to call the Village Board of Trustees to order. It's Monday, November 2nd at 6:30. We are holding this, we are holding this meeting via Zoom. There is a way to connect through the link for the video and everything. On the top of the agenda, as well as if you prefer just to do audio, that number is on the agenda as well. And for those that want to join in, if you choose to participate during the meeting and need to get ahold of Lisa, that her email address is also there, Clerk. Everything is being recorded, so even the chats and everything are captured for reference, so just keep that in mind. With that, we'll have roll call. So Lisa?
Alan.
President.
Lindberg.
President.
Murphy.
President.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Valencia.
Present.
Vanderweilby.
Here.
Williams.
Here. All right, we have a quorum. The agenda was properly posted. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so find a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, moving on to item four then is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak on any subject, whether on the agenda or not. So I will take a pause, and if anybody from the public would like to join in, please do so. Let us know your name, your address, and obviously the item that you would like to speak about. And please limit that to three minutes in case we have a number of folks that want to speak. All right, we'll move on then to item five, discuss and consider the meeting minutes from our regular board meeting from October 19th. Any questions, comments regarding that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve as presented by Troy and Melissa for the Board Member Meeting Minutes on October 19th. Any discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. And then the second part of this item is, or agenda item is, the meeting minutes from our budget workshop held on October 26th. Also included in the packet.
I'll make a motion to approve that as well.
All right, motion by Troy, seconded by Melissa as presented. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Moving then on to item six, we have a presentation from Bob Power from the Colonial Club regarding the 2021 budget request. And I saw that Bob was on, so Bob?
Hey, good evening, everybody.
All right, there we go, wonderful.
Everybody can hear? Great.
Yes.
So yeah, Colonial Club, it's been an interesting eight months or whatever month we're into now. Not much has changed in the service delivery from my last report, probably, which was back already in the summer. We're still providing home-delivered meals, we're still doing supportive home care, we're still doing adult daycare. We're still providing some transportation, not a lot, but we are serving some. And then over the summer, we started doing some activities that people can come in and participate in. We've got a couple of exercise classes, which we keep at 10 or below. And they sign up and follow all the protocols that are established for that. We do a movie a couple of times a month, mainly the people in the apartments next to us, it gives them a chance to get out and do something different. The exercise room is open, so we have people taking appointments for that. We have quite a few people coming in, and they use the computer lab, so that's one at a time, they can book it for 30 to 45 minutes at a time. And I had already sent out my annual request to you guys, so if you happen to have that, I can give you some updates on some numbers from this year thus far. So when I look at the box at the top and it says benefits received in hours and case management, in all of 2019, we had 182 hours. And the numbers I'm going to give you for this year are through the end of September, so we have three months to go. So through the end of September in 2020, we have logged 207 hours of case management for village residents. So up just over 20, about 25. We don't have anybody in the Adult Day Center from the village. We, as you might know, we had to pull back on the number of people that are allowed in the Adult Day Center. So we have to have two staff members with eight people to get our 10. There were a couple of people from the village and maybe one from the town of Cottage Grove that had been in the Adult Day Center, but they have opted to stay home. They have not requested to come back in. And just today, we have an opening, so that could change in the next few weeks. Supportive home care, we're almost dead on to what we were last year. By through the end of September, we had 200 hours, and we had 200 hours in all of 2019. Of course, there's nobody coming in to have a meal at the Colonial Club, so there are no meals where that 492 is. Dane County's recommendation is still to keep that closed. We have heard, I believe, Fitchburg and Northwest Dane Senior Centers, we're both going to experiment with bringing a few people in for lunch. They had a couple of clients that they were all really concerned about with the isolation. But we haven't gone, gone in that direction to reopen our congregate meal site. And then the big one would be the home-delivered meals. In 2019, we had 2,453. And through the end of September, we almost met that, we're at 20, 2,420 meals. So with two more months, we would be inching in on 3,000 meals delivered in Cottage Grove. Transportation is way down, but we do, and it was probably all before COVID, between January and March, we had about 1,700 miles of transportation for clients. Both the Adult Day Center and some people, again, still coming to lunch at our place. So, you know, we're, we're still providing services. We had took every opportunity we could when grants came available this year to apply for. There were numerous emergency grants through the Boys and Girls Club, which we wrote for and received $5,000. We did a joint application with the Sun Prairie Food Pantry and the Sun Prairie Sunshine Place. With, and then Shelter from the Storms Ministry, sorry, there were four of us. And we applied jointly for the United Way Grant. We got about $100,000. That was split among the four of us, so we came in at about just at $24,000. We were, this was our 50th anniversary year. We were supposed to be doing all this grand celebrating, and we were going to do a big fundraising effort. And I had the letter done, we had the date picked, it was going to be April 1st, and guess who got fooled? It was me. We didn't get to send that letter out, we instead sent a plea to our donors and supporters. And we had a really, really nice response, just over $70,000 from our sponsors. And that's collective, that's from April through about the end of September as well. From a foundation out of Minnesota called the Otto Brimmer Foundation, that was about $5,000. And we got about a $3,500 grant from the Green Bay Packer Foundation at the beginning of November, or October. So we've been active, you know, we've been working hard trying to find some money. We also applied and did receive a PPP grant through the Fed program. So we've remained full staff. We've had to reassign some staff duties, of course. But everybody's still working, everybody's still getting a paycheck, so we're very happy and relieved about that. We didn't, weren't able to do, of course, our two big fundraisers of the year, Strawberry Fest in June. And then this Friday was supposed to be our 11th Annual Ale Fest, our beer tasting event, and of course, that is canceled. We did do some drive-through events, brats, and we worked with Full Mile Brewery in Sun Prairie. And we sold their beers by the Growlers, Crowlers, I guess they're called when they're in cans. And we did okay, you know, we did three of those, and altogether, all three of them, we probably raised about $11,000. So nothing to sneeze at, I mean, it was helpful, to be sure. We submitted our grant to Dane County Human Services, they're our largest funder. We don't really submit anything, we work with them throughout the year on what the year's going to look like. And we established priorities. And two of the priorities this year were case management funding and nutrition site management. And as you might guess, as in our own commercial kitchen, preparing the food onsite, nutrition site management is important money to us. And case management is always important. We, we, the county, we were asking the focal points, all, all of the senior centers in the county for an additional 75,000. It was part of a three-year case management increase, and thus far, that hasn't been approved. So if I may be so bold, if you haven't made any decisions yet, and you want to attach a couple thousand more, we wouldn't refuse it based on not getting that case management money from the county this year. I believe, and maybe Melissa can verify, but I believe that's a done deal, that it's not in the county budget.
That's correct, nobody, it wasn't in the, the executives' budget and supervise, there was no additional money left in the budget. So supervisors didn't do an amendment to the budget for case management because it was $70,000. They did an amendment to the budget for the nutrition site management, though, which was about 24,000, I think. But that has yet to be approved.
Yeah.
It's that Personnel and Finance Committee tonight for the County Board. Tonight and tomorrow, I think they're deliberating on those, and then it goes to the County Board next Monday.
Thank you. So that's kind of my update and review of numbers thus far. I'll, I'll be quiet for a little bit and try to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thanks, Bob. Any questions from board members?
Well, I have one then. Thank you for being here this evening, Bob. I appreciate you giving us the updates. So in Cottage Grove, then, have you seen an uptick? Well, I think you kind of said it, or maybe I missed it, an uptick in senior meals delivered to Cottage Grove residents, then?
Yeah, yeah, we'll end, yeah, it looks like we'll end the year with about 500 to 600 more meals than we did last year. So we do see, we steadily, since, since March, we probably get, you know, in the beginning, it was two, three, four new clients a week. Now it's more like three or four a month, but yeah, they're still coming on. And with the winter coming, we've actually put word out again, and we've seen an uptick again, just in the last week, with five new requests coming on.
Okay.
We've had to more than double our, our volunteer drivers, and I think I put a plea in my request about that. We, so we're doing 10 routes a day out of our building, so that's 50 drivers a week. No, that's, yeah, that's 50 drivers a week that are volunteering their time and giving those meals to people's homes. Some of them are older drivers and already anticipating taking the winter off because they don't like to drive. So we'll be putting that plea out again, but yeah, it's, the meal program is huge.
Do you expect, so you, you mentioned about case management, that you have 207 hours so far?
Correct.
For Cottage Grove, and what does that entail again?
So like right now, they're in their very busy season of Medicare Part D. So people who are just turning 65, this is a big deal for them, being able to work with somebody who's knowledgeable in Medicare signups. We've set up our, one of our conference rooms in such a fashion that it's actually as safe as it could possibly be for somebody to come in personally. We do have all the barriers, you know, all the shields, but often, they're sitting down, and it's a two- or three-hour process with, with the case manager, trying to figure out what this is, what do I need, what's it going to cost me? And that runs through the end of November, so yeah, we'll be very busy with that. We're also just seeing, as you might guess, just about the isolation factor. Just not seeing people for months on end, or seeing the same people if they're in, you know, community housing, is really taking its toll. We know both Wanakee and DeForest have experienced suicides among their seniors since this has begun. We fortunately have not seen that, but as I mentioned early on, when I was talking about, some of our staff has been reassigned. So like, some of the aides in the Day Center, where we don't need as many people as we did before, what they're doing all week long is calling all of our clients. They just call our meal, those that receive meals, those on the case management list, those who are just active in activities, and they just talk to them. And it's, it's fascinating to talk to the staff about that because they've developed, you know, relationships with these people over the phone over the last six to eight months, and, you know, they can tell the minute they answer the phone that this is going to be a long call today.
Great, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Your time and, and
Sorry, Bob.
Opportunity to request.
Again, we certainly appreciate you taking time, Bob, to present, provide us the numbers and everything, particularly focused on the citizens in Cottage Grove, but obviously, you guys are supporting a lot of other communities in the area, I certainly appreciate that too as well. So any other questions for Bob before he signs off or jumps off here? And he looks like he has one more point.
I just wanted to make sure you did understand that all of the municipalities that we receive funding from, the City of Sun Prairie, the Town and Village of Cottage Grove, Marshall, Medina, Bristol, Burke, we've asked all of them for increases. We asked the City of Sun Prairie for an additional $50,000, which would take their annual donation from 210,000 up to 260,000, so you certainly weren't singled out. I met with the City of Sun Prairie last Tuesday, and of course, we haven't heard back yet. They're still deliberating their budgets, so just wanted to make sure you remembered that. Thanks.
Bob, if I can ask, if I can ask two quick questions, the numbers you provided as far as help, is that strictly to the village? Or does that include the village and the town of Cottage Grove?
No.
And have you had, had to make any staff adjustments, layoffs, had people leave because of the COVID situation we're in?
No, those numbers are strictly the village. The town, we keep, we keep those separate. So those are truly village residents. And no, we have not laid anybody off. We had a couple of our home chore providers in the beginning decline to work because of, of some personal reasons, and we just didn't assign them those hours, but kept them on the payroll. Now, one of them has returned. The other one is, was a student, and I'm not sure if she is going to return since she's back in school. But nobody's been laid off, no.
Great, great, thank you very much, Bob.
You bet.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Bob? All right, again, thanks, Bob, appreciate you taking the time, and we have considered your requests, and your new requests we'll have to also consider now too as well, so. All right, then moving on to item seven is new business, and that is discuss and consider update to our building permit fee schedule. Matt and Aaron and staff have been working on this, so Matt, I think you have a memo in the packet, you want to start us off?
Sure, thanks, Jen. So we, general engineering's been handling the village inspections for, coming up on a one year now, and this, for their first year, they were working under former Building Inspector Tom Beakins' fee schedule, just to help with the transition and see how things went. And coming up on that, end of that year, I had asked them to present to us maybe what they would recommend. We haven't updated fees for quite some time in, in the village, and so the comparison side by side that you see is a combination of what they've proposed, and also what we've found through research from other, other municipalities and through general engineering, is that having a percentage of the fees for administrative, administrative purposes for staff time, for village time, such as Lisa and Sarah, to be retained to help the village keep some of those costs from staff time that's taken on. So that's, that's kind of the main change, and otherwise, there's not a lot of change in the fees, other than they're formatted a little differently, and both Jim and Mark from General Engineering are here tonight too to answer questions. And staff also, like I mentioned, we researched a few other communities that are comparables to ours, Oregon, McFarland, and Forest. And, you know, it's hard to get perfect apples to apples, but there, there were, the fees that we have in front of you tonight are not, that they aren't outliers, either on the high end or the low end, so.
Matt, real quick, regarding staff time, just to confirm, which I think I already know the answer, but that is something fairly standard in other communities as well?
Certainly with general engineering contracted communities, I believe that, you guys can speak to this, please, but I, somewhere upwards of 25%, but I think the average was around 10%, which is what we have in here. And we've also capped it at no more than $500, so if there was a, a large building permit expense, we would not be retaining more than $500 for that.
Thanks, Matt.
And up until that time, it was, it was just a purely a break even as far as inspection fees. It was a straight pass-through to the building inspector, so village administrative time, we were not, we were not keeping anything before. So we're actually technically losing money. This will, this will be closer to a break even for the village.
All right, are there questions for Matt or General regarding fees?
John, if I could just ask Mark, Mark, if you wouldn't mind just speaking to it a little bit about how these compare to other communities. I know you guys have 150, 200 Wisconsin communities that you serve.
Get in here. There, I think you can hear me now, right?
Yes, thanks.
No, I would say you're on the right track. Most of our communities add a percentage on to cover some of the costs or at least break even. And the vast majority of ours, you know, over 200 accounts, use this particular pricing schedule. And we look at it every three years, and I think you're, you're on another two years before we'll look at it again. But, you know, it's the same price to everybody. We try to be fair, and I think it helps contractors out, knowing that the price in all our communities, you know, is the same. So as far as the percentage, that, you know, each community picks their own percentage, so we certainly don't have any input on that, other than just providing the math to it. That's about it.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was going to say, any other questions before I mute?
That's just what I was going to ask the board for. Anybody from the board have any questions related to this?
I would move to approve the building fee.
I would move to approve the building fee permit as the building permit fee update as enclosed in the packet.
All right. Motion by Sarah, seconded by Troy. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Second, new business item is discuss and consider the ordinance 11-2020 regarding amending chapter 130-10. And this is also related to the building moving fee. And there is a memo from Stafford in our packets regarding this. Any discussion on that question?
I would move to approve the ordinance 11-2020 regarding amending chapter 130-10 sub D.
As presented?
I second that.
Both as presented?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We got a motion second Sarah and Jeff. Any further discussion on ordinance amending chapter 130-10 section D? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Item C then is discuss and consider the application from Chris and Jason Echols and for building permit for a new swimming pool at their residence at 312 Southern Grange. So we have an idea here. Matt or Aaron, you want to talk about Aaron, I suppose. Aaron, you want to talk about the the memo you put together and then
Sure.
go from there.
Yes, there is a staff report that kind of gives some background on the issue. The applicants have their home in the South Lawn Estates First Edition subdivision. They were looking to get a building permit to put in a pool. When we looked into it, the plat shows an environmental corridor that runs through their backyard labeled as 100 year floodplain line. Our floodplain ordinance, which is based on state law, doesn't allow any kind of structure or building in a floodplain. So the permit was denied based on that, but there was a note on the plat indicating that the board could kind of waive that prohibition on building in the corridor, which was weird because as I said, our ordinance based on state law wouldn't allow that. So we kind of kept digging into it. Kevin had one of MSA's environmental engineers look into it and he discovered that FEMA hadn't actually mapped that portion of the village. So it wasn't technically a FEMA floodplain line that was on the plat, which in Larry's opinion meant our floodplain ordinance didn't apply, which in turn means that our board does have some discretion to allow building past this line. Even though FEMA hasn't mapped that area, MSA did do some floodplain analysis for that area a few years ago. And they determined the 100 year floodplain line was actually lower than what is shown on the plat, which would actually give the applicants more room to work with as far as locating the pool on their property. So after most of our staff has looked at this at one point or another, our recommendation would be to allow the building permit. But on the condition that they stay above the 873 foot floodplain line, which should give them more than enough room to do what they want to do.
All right. Any questions for Aaron or staff?
I have a question if I can. So, you know, I have no issues with what we're doing here, honestly. But if there is that 100 year flood, thousand year flood, whatever they want to term it, determine that the pool fills up with sediments. We're in no liability, no situation where we have to help take care of that because we've authorized this, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Larry.
Perfect. Thanks. I'll make a motion to approve as presented then.
I'll second.
All right, we had a motion from Troy, a second for Jeff to approve the application from Echols and regarding the building permit swimming pool.
With the the specifications that Aaron pointed out.
Yes. Troy, you okay with that?
Yep, yep. Thank you.
Specifications in the staff report. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody oppose? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Item D then is
Now, before you move on, could I could I have a couple of minutes?
Yes, you may.
So in addition to the flood, the line marked 100 year flood limits, 100 year flood limits on this plat, there's also a line that's referred to as public access greenland buffer strip easement. We were exploring that in this context until we determined that that line was far enough away from from the home that it really wasn't going to be relevant. But this brings us back to the discussion we had a few months ago about the Foster application. And we've been gathering information slowly. We've been pushing CARP C and DNR over time to try to pin down what flexibility the village has. And I've I've actually come to a conclusion on that. I believe the village does have flexibility to allow. So, you know, we you just did what what we recommended with respect to the floodline with this other line that we find in three or four of the plats along the creek. I believe that the village has some flexibility there too. I have verified that with DNR finally last week. And so what we'd like to do is for the next board meeting, bring you some recommendations or I guess maybe more so options for how you'll deal with that. We can specify where those easements exist, what they might be used for in the future. And what if any flexibility, additional flexibility, the village would like to see the residents and homeowners have along those lines. Because I think we shouldn't do that on a case by case basis. It should be something where you think about it somewhat comprehensively.
Okay, that's great information, Larry, and good to know. What about the specific applicants right now who have this challenge before them? Are we going to have a similar situation as we just this one?
The the people who you just voted to approve, they will not have that problem because they're not proposing to put the pool over that line?
No, I'm talking about the there's a couple other, at least one other one.
The Fosters.
For sure. We have this green space or whatever delineation in their plats.
Well, when we, if if you want us to do this and bring this back to you for the next board meeting, we will specify for you how what how your options would impact the Fosters. And also remember that we've got other other properties, other parcels in the village where there's structures across these lines already because they got lost in the shuffle. Or, you know, it just wasn't caught. So there's some secondary structures and maybe I've heard even corners of some primary, you know, residences that have crossed this line. So I think it's important for us to look at it again from a broader perspective as to how you want to move forward. And we've got some pretty good options as to as to what you what you might do. And it may even be end up being an ordinance that you pass related to this, but but for the most part, we have to make sure we don't just do it by a case by case analysis. For instance, on the 873 foot elevation that you just adopted for the Echols. You know, we think that's just basically a standard recommendation we'll make moving forward. We've done all the homework to sort of establish what the standards, what we've recommended the standard to be. So we know what we're going to do the next time we get one of these. And we'd want, I think, to have the same kind of system in place for these green spaces.
Okay. Thanks, Larry. Are we, I'm assuming we're coming back to the individuals as well to to let them know that this is going to be coming up in the next.
Yes. Yeah, I had a conversation with their, one of their attorneys last week and then also just got an email from another one of their attorneys today. And we'll follow up with him this week to let him know that we'll be putting something together. They know very well that that we've been very clear with them and have communicated a number of times about the process we're going through. And actually, they've been quite helpful with it. So we've been sort of teaming up with them to gather the information we need to make this call.
Okay. Any questions for Larry or we're going to move on then because this is related yet unrelated to the agenda item.
Just related enough, we like to say.
There's enough gray there? All right. Thanks, Larry. Again, appreciate your your efforts as well as all staff. I know JJ is involved and a number of other folks in in trying to clear this up for the residents and make sure it's fair and appropriate. So thank you. Then we will move on to we have a item D is discuss and consider a community page on the village website. This is brought up, I believe, by trustee Alan in conversations.
Yeah, just had a Lions meeting, a virtual Lions meeting a couple of weeks ago and it was just brought up about community organizations in our community guide and was asked about having it in our website. And I think all community organizations would benefit Boy Scouts, Optimists, anybody else that might be in there, that there's just a link to the website is really what I'm thinking. But and I'm not sure if there might be opposition to that, if we're taking on any liability for having links to community organizations, but or service organizations in general, but just looking to see if we could get that part of our webpage now that we're revamping it.
I don't like to do this generally, but Larry, going to put you on the spot there to answer Troy's comment or question about any risk for doing this. Obviously, if some community organization that was perhaps on the fringes and may offend some folks, that might be an issue, but that's not what we have in our current community guide. It's it's those those community organizations that Troy rattled off, Optimists, the 4H, the Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Lions. And I know that I'm missing several other ones.
Yeah, I think I think there's always risk, right? But if all you're going to do is is provide a link to these other sources, people can choose whether or not they want to go there. And and quite frankly, if if it gets to the point where something, whether there's a request that we feel might offend, we can we can cross that bridge when we get there too. Either that or we could work through creating a policy now. You know, it it's not easy to do because, you know, watch what's going on right now with Facebook and Twitter and how they're trying to deal with, you know, controlling speech. So it it's a it's a challenge. I always tell communities, the worst case scenario is somebody asks for something you don't want to do and there's pushback and you can just get rid of the page, you know? And you can just do it for no one if someone ruins it.
Okay. Any questions from board members or comments?
I'm just trying to open up the community guide now. Is there already a list of organizations in the community guide that we could just like use that as our start starting point?
Yes, there is.
You mean, that seems like a pretty good place to start, I guess?
Yeah, we're already providing information in print. This will just be electronic. Obviously, it'd be a little bit of staff time, so we got to be considerate of that. But if we were putting it up once, generally, these organizations don't change their sites that often. So once it's up, then it's then it's there. So I think that that minimizes that rework. And if we're not putting anything else besides that on there, but we have to maintain it, that's probably okay.
I I like the idea. I think that would be beneficial and would have made it a lot easier to contact all of the groups when we were doing the survey, getting that out there. So so I think it's a good idea.
I've seen it in other communities. I've seen it not in other communities. So it's a it's a mix.
I'll move to approve that we allow community organizations to have a link to their website on the community page of the village.
I'll second.
Motion from Sarah, seconded by Paul. You guys want to say that it's start with the community guide as a list or?
Sure.
In that motion?
Can I ask a question? Can I ask one other question? Does it matter if it's a a website or if it's a Facebook page? And the reason being, I think some smaller organizations don't necessarily have their own webpage?
From my perspective, it doesn't matter. It's a link to Larry's point. It's not saying you know, we're not, other than linking, I don't see an issue with that.
Okay.
I would agree. I'm just trying, I'm just trying not to pigeonhole someone into if you don't have a webpage, you can't be a part of it. That's all. So I think Facebook is evil myself, so I don't do it. But other folks do have, you know, other organizations have Facebook pages, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Is there a different way to reword the motion, Troy, that you feel like would be more inclusive?
Well, we, the motion was stated as as a webpage, I think, a web and and or Facebook page or a web or Facebook page. That's that's all I'm saying.
Yeah. I mean, if we wanted to get even deeper, not everybody is on Facebook. Some are on Instagram. Some are doing a whole bunch of other social media. So do we just do we just say a link? Can we just say a link to the organization's information page, which could be their own website or Facebook or Instagram?
I would think that covers it, but.
That would seem reasonable.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Lisa, do you have that covered?
So I have it as to allow communities to have a link on the on the village website.
I think that works if we just say a link because then it can be a link to their information, however they present it.
And that's my next question is, are these groups going to reach out to us to provide that link? Or are you asking that we research that and reach out to them to put it on?
They should reach out to us as a village. I would I would say that. And maybe it's a website or social media page is maybe the way to phrase that. And Lisa, we need this done by tomorrow with the election and stuff, just so you know, that's part of the consideration here.
Well.
Just kidding.
All right. Does everybody, anybody else have any other comments or questions or even concerns about this?
I just have one quick. How do people get in the community guide? Do they let Parks and Rec know or how? How does organization get in the community guide?
Parks and Recs, Parks and Rec take it from the newspaper. So so there's some incorrect information in our community guide because it hasn't been updated either. So.
Yeah, if I if I may, Melissa's correct. That part of the community guide is created by the Herald. So if there's somebody specific that wants to get onto our website that we need to include in the community guide, somebody should get that information to us so that we can pass it on to the Herald and make sure that they're included.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All right. Having heard none, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right, then we'll move on to reports from village boards, commissions and committees. The first one is the NAFIC Monitoring Review Committee. There is an action item here and some information in the packet discussing considering approval of professional services by strand for NAFIC landfill or amendment number two, I think. Paul and Jeff touched on this before. There was some concern about some methane emissions. And the DNR has come back and confirmed that this effort needs to be taken on by both the town and the village. Paul or Jeff, you guys want to talk about that any further?
No, I think that covers it, John.
Okay. And because they give us heads up, I think we did have money set aside, if I remember talking to Matt correctly, that we've kind of penciled this one. that we've kind of penciled this one in because we thought it might happen for our 2021 budget at least.
Yeah, I recall that was part of the last conversation we had on it.
Correct. It's in the it's in the capital budget as proposed currently.
All right. Any questions or comments about this from the board?
I'll just, sorry, John, one one addition. I believe it's in our capital budget at 22,000. So, where it might not be an exact split, but I I I think for the purposes of moving forward, that's not a problem.
Yeah, because there was a range in the in the letter. They need to do the work or get started on the work before they figure out exactly what it's going to be. And I know my, you know, spots have to put these things in.
I move to approve the professional service by strand for the NAFIC landfill for amendment number two as presented to us this evening.
All right. Got a motion from Sarah, second from Troy. Any further questions or comments? Having heard not all those in favor. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Anything else, Paul or Troy? I get it wrong. Paul, anything else from that?
No, I think that was the remaining item that needed to be considered. So, I think that covers it, John.
Okay, thank you. All right. Then we'll move on to the law enforcement committee. Sarah, Troy, you want to jump in? Or I can jump in. Doesn't matter. I've got it in front of me too. But I'm just seeing, you know, I'm all talking, so.
There really wasn't too much discussed, other than the the media coverage on the toilet papering situation that she shared with us and the reaction that that got from from some folks on Facebook. Otherwise, things are operating as expected. But others can chime in.
Unfortunately, I think that was the only item that was covered. Normal level of of activity, maybe a little down. But yeah, it's, I guess, we're fortunate that's all we're covering in law enforcement is some posts on 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 the homecoming week activities. So, Troy, anything else?
Yes, that that's that covers it. No major crime sprees in the Village Cottage Grove, which is awesome.
All right. Any questions for law enforcement? All right. Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Troy. Then we'll move on to the library planning committee. Melissa?
The survey is done. We are reviewing all the results and will be, we decided to present to the village board all of our findings from what the library planning committee was tasked with at the December 21st meeting. And our next meeting for the library planning committee is Wednesday.
Any questions for Melissa? It's nice to see that I saw the notes, at least packet, 30% of households in a village. That's a, that's a great response for a survey. Normally.
Yeah. Yeah, it was amazing.
So, we'll look forward to the.
Had a to fill y'all in on.
Yeah. All right. Super. Then we'll move on to ordinance committee. Heidi?
Okay. My dog was just going crazy a second ago, so hopefully she stopped. So, we met last week on the 28th. We talked about three different ordinances. The first is one that we have in front of us to consider sending to legal review. It's about what's known as a Knox box. It's kind of like a key safe that's on the exterior of commercial or multifamily buildings. So, the fire department can use their master key for all lock boxes to access the building key to get into the building. It also covers like doors that are numbered in a larger building. So, you may see at schools if there's a certain number above the door. And then some other recommendations that perhaps larger buildings, depending on their configuration, should consider installing multiple boxes. You know, it kind of depends if it's a long skinny building, so we wanted to leave that open just for consideration, depending on how the building's laid out versus making it mandatory if it's over a certain square footage. So, as we move forward in ordinance review suggestions or changes, we're going to prepare a memo like the one you see to send to legal. These are the things we want to achieve by changing this ordinance and then circle back with the legal terminology. So, we're explaining it in plain language to get the goal that we want. They did prepare the form for ordinance review and then used an example from Sun Prairie. So, that's some of the language that we were recommending legal consider when when writing this ordinance for us. So, anyone have any questions about that or discussion around that? It hadn't been updated in quite a few years, and the village is growing. So, that's why I thought there's a need for that.
That was my only question. Other board members?
Or Paul has anything to add from our discussion too?
You covered it all, Heidi. Nice report out.
I move to approve that we send the chapter 130 dash 26E for legal review.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Sarah, second from Melissa. Any further discussion? Having heard not all those in favor. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Anything else, Heidi or Paul?
The memo, we're going to start preparing memos like that one for our other ordinances. So, the next two we're going to go back to is the peddlers, canvassers, transient merchants for food trucks, and then the keeping of animals specifically regarding chickens. So, we're going to look at other communities and write a plain language memo like this to then send to legal. And our next meeting, because the holidays is kind of funky, we're going to have one meeting December 16th at 5:30 kind of between the two.
All right. Thanks, Heidi. Then we'll move on to Emergency Preparedness Committee. I don't know if Lieutenant Wagner's on. You aren't the chair as selected or by, by not even selected, you're required to send that. Do you want to kind of give us an overview when we met last?
Sure. Yeah, we had our inaugural meeting as the Emergency Preparedness Committee for the Village Cottage Grove. Yes, per the document, I was selected as the chairman and JJ Larson is going to be the secretary of the committee nominated by the Parks and Rec Director. We went through the entire emergency preparedness plan, just kind of going through all the highlights and getting everyone up to speed and up to date with that plan. We talked about ICS training and the staff members that are going to participate in that are working through that right now or have already completed it. We are going to meet on a quarterly basis as of right now, or it must be the rise. We have plans in place moving forward to, again, have the mobile EOC sites. I plan on putting together those mobile bags here soon. And we talked about what the items that the committee and the board wanted in those and have those strategically placed throughout the community. Hopefully, that they'll never be used. Other than that, I don't, can't really think of anything else, John. Melissa, am I missing anything?
Just just to add, because we use too many acronyms in this world, ICS is Incident Command System. So, there's, I know recommended the committee members go through the three, three levels of that just to know the jargon that might be used when we get to either tabletop or, and heaven forbid, we ever actually have to deploy this. So, that's what we're all going to be working through. Some of us are already blistering through and finished it already. Others are just going to carve out some time to get it done. So, that's the only thing I wanted to clarify. So.
The nice thing is, we did have representation from Landmark and Hydrate at our first meeting, which was great. We're hoping, in the school district, actually. So, we're hoping to get some of the other larger businesses and firms involved and actually on a quarterly basis.
Melissa, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just gonna know. I looked up on our website about the committee and just wanted to bring it to Lisa's attention that it needs to be updated, I guess, or changed to Emergency Preparedness Committee. Because have we gotten rid of the EOC then or the emergency, the joint one then? Or because it has Sarah on the committee and not me. So, I didn't know if we, what's going on with that?
We can update it.
So, I mean, we don't have the other committee anymore, right?
Right.
So, okay. And then, and I wasn't sure who all is on, like officially on the committee, like if all the staff members are, if we ever do have to vote on anything, because that was kind of mentioned at the meeting as well.
Yeah, the the committee makeup is actually in the preparedness plan. And I know Matt was going to talk with legal when it came to the voting aspect of that committee.
Okay. Otherwise, yeah, it was, it's all very interesting, and I have to work on the I ICS 100. So, I look forward to that.
Yes, and it'll it'll be timely to ask that question too, because there there are other new ad hoc committees that are that have been added that have staff on them. But I, in in general, staff are not that they're, they're there for support, but not not necessarily voting members, generally speaking. But some of these more informal, you know, purely advisory committees, that's something we can, I'll talk about with Larry and Rick and report back.
All right. Any questions from the board on that? All right. All right. Then we'll move on to reports from village officers. Item nine, the first one is from myself nominating a number of folks to the Housing Task Force. I think we've got a good mix, it looks like, from both business, different types of developers in here that have all come in in the last week or so. And you guys, the board has, should have seen hopefully all those nomination sheets as well or those background sheets. So, any questions or comments regarding this?
I'll make the motion to approve the nominations of Megan Schutz, Ryan Lovejoy, Andrew Humber, Corey Frank, Tim Olson, and Shannon Shade to the Housing Task Force.
Oh, second.
Motion by Melissa, second by Jeff. Any further discussion?
Yeah, it it, I I'm totally in favor of all the folks that are being nominated here. Where are we at on the mix for that task force? Are are we getting? I know we've got a mix of different stakeholders, I guess, but are we getting that committee full? Are are we having too many business, not enough residents? I I guess I haven't seen a list of, an updated list of all the folks involved, and I'm just curious where we're at with that.
So, I know Lisa's been keeping us honest as far as capturing them. I believe we're pretty close, and Erin, you can correct me, to kind of that original goal of both number and mix. But Erin, you want to comment on that?
Yeah. In addition to these members, we had a few from the school district. We had at least one resident. What the best mix today was some developers, but also Ryan Lovejoy was a small business person. Shannon Shade was from Summit, representing large business. The one we may still be looking for is a renter. We did have another someone from a rental company apply today. That could be a valuable member, but I think a renter resident is someone we'd still be looking for.
Thanks, Erin. Does that address your question, Troy?
It 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 does. It just, you know, trying to mentally keep track of the the applicants and having great moments like I do. I was just trying to, in my mind, wrap around who's all involved. I I guess personally, it'd be nice to see another resident or two. You know, developers have their own agenda, in in my opinion. So, you know, I I I think the people it impacts at the end of the day are people that live around, you know, those types of developments. And and, you know, it'd be nice to have more citizens, maybe, in my opinion. But I'm just one person.
No, I think Erin outlined that we do need at least a renter, probably another resident at this point. So, we're close. Remember, that committee is going to be more than a dozen. Folks getting getting together and and trying to tackle this problem, provide us a report over the next 12 months or so. And then the real additional work starts from there, probably likely from the CDA and others.
I don't think we were quite expecting all of the developers to say yes, but so far, they they all have. So, I might have shifted the balance a little bit, as Troy pointed out.
Some people represent multiple, some people are residents and, right? Like, so the person, we have this CDA representative who clearly, obviously, also a resident. And so, right, so there's, they're serving multiple roles in some in some aspects.
Yes, that is correct, Sarah. But I think Erin's right in pointing out that we probably need to to, I need to track down somebody that's a renter that that wants to participate in this, to get that perspective as well. All right. I think we had a motion as second, if I remember all correctly. Any further discussion? Having heard not all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. And then we'll move on to, I think it's Larry tonight. He spoke earlier.
He is.
All right.
Nothing else to report since I snuck my update into the last agenda.
All right. Thanks, Larry. Then we'll move on to COVID-19 update. Tonight, I think we'll start with Lisa because she has a number of folks that are going to be coming to the hall to vote tomorrow.
Yes, we will, and we are ready. And I sent you out an update on the numbers. Just as of today, with absentees being returned, we are at 3,314 returned. And we have a total of 4,813 registered voters. So, we're at 96% turnout for our absentees, which is totally amazing. We only have 122 outstanding at this point. So, we're anticipating to have maybe around 1,000, maybe 1,200 people in person voting tomorrow. So, hopefully, they don't all come at once, and we can social distance them, and everybody stays safe and healthy.
All right. Thanks, Lisa. Appreciate all your efforts. Next, then, Deb, I'm gonna put you on the spot because you got to, I think I picked you last last time. Anything else is going on around COVID?
I don't really have any report going that relates to COVID.
Okay. All right. All right. Then we'll move to Matt.
Okay. Wasn't sure if that was lieutenant at first or not.
I say lieutenant, man.
Sure. Actually, I could think, I'm taking one that Deb could have taken here, but we're working with our accountants and. uh, uh, accountants and auditors to make sure we're maximizing the amount of, um, reimbursable grant funds that we can get through the roads to recovery. So that's about, I believe, 109,000 is what's allocated as possible reimbursement. And, um, with some of the, uh, changing, um, ways that they're allowing us to, uh, um, get those funds, we should be able to completely maximize that 109,000. So, um, excited about that. Other than that, everyone's, uh, healthy as far as I know.
Okay. Thanks, Matt.
Yep.
Uh, Chief?
Yep, uh, everybody at the police department is healthy also. Nobody has COVID. Um, we're doing well. Business as usual for the most part.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Uh, Lieutenant Wagner?
Um, I sent an email out to, uh, the, the board last week, along with all the department heads with, uh, answering the information from a couple of board meetings ago. So, um, once I get those, uh, documents again, I will keep forwarding them out to you. Um, you know, amongst those show, those documentations is we have COVID in Cottage Grove and, um, we need to social distance and, yeah, mask around public just to, uh, to keep everyone safe and, um, especially tomorrow with Lisa and Deb and, uh, the village hall being exposed to more people than we really want them to be, um, just, uh, try to keep them safe when we do come and vote. So, um, unless anyone has any questions for me, that's all I got.
I do just have a quick question. Sorry. And it, maybe it's for Lisa and/or Lieutenant Wagner. Do you guys have the appropriate PPE, a surgical mask and a face shield?
Yes, we have PPE. Um, we have face masks. We don't have shields. We have Plexiglas for each of the individual stations um, that people will be coming into. And we are, have the room set up in a one-way manner, um, so that we can social distance. And we will be limiting the number of people that will be entered in, into the room at a time.
Okay. And your masks are surgical masks, not fabric, right?
They are, no, they're paper. They're not surgical masks. They're paper. And we do have some cotton cloth ones.
Okay.
Which was provided by the state.
Okay. Lieutenant, we don't, do we have any higher grade masks? We can provide them?
I believe we do. I will make sure.
So when you say they're provided by the state, is that public health? Is public health providing those to you?
The state election commission, um, they, um, got all of our PPE for all of the municipalities in the state. So this is what we've been given by them, along with hand sanitizer and clean solutions. Um.
Lisa, when you say paper, Matt, you, I, I, I think you mean surgical ma, the blue surgical masks, right?
Disposable protective mask. I'm looking at the box right in front of me.
But not, just not N95.
Right. So there are two, there are two levels of surgical masks. There's the paper version, which is probably the blue version. And then there's a, there's a, a, a more robust surgical mask. It's still the paper disposable. Um, but it has usually a different color scheme. Anyway, I just want to make sure that our team has, um, the highest quality of mask we can. I, fabric is the least effective. I can't, does it say on there? I can't read back. What does it say it is for level?
Um, three ply filter construction comfortable fit, um, smooth breathing. So it's the ones that are blue on one side and white on the other.
Yeah. Lieutenant, what do we have? Do we have? Um, the, any others?
Uh, yeah, I think we have some N95s that we can get up there.
And then these are the white cotton, uh, if you can see that, fabric ones.
Yeah, I would definitely do cotton fabric as your absolute last resort. But if Lieutenant Wagner has some N95, uh, that would be, um, my request for you guys to have.
I'll take care of her.
Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Lieutenant. All right, um, moving on then to JJ.
No report.
All right, thanks, JJ. Sean?
Uh, no report. We're all healthy and happy in Parks and Recreation, knock on wood. Um, I, I'm even happier that the Bears lost last night. Um, on, on another happy note, uh, the Ghostly Ghoul, uh, Ghostly in the Grove tour, uh, we had a 11 different houses that participated and over 300 votes. And my wife and I took a, a cruise around on Saturday night, and there were cars all over the village that were voting on this stuff. So it was really cool, really cool to see the community engagement. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Sean, for the more positive aspect of this craziness. Um, all right, then we'll move on to, uh, communication with the administration in this, consider approval of the vouchers. Any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
Second.
And first by Troy, second by Melissa, as presented. Uh, any, uh, discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Uh, correspondence, uh, I didn't have anything other than what we've gotten out. Uh, upcoming community events. Halloween's gone, so that's just Thanksgiving. Um, anything, uh, any board members aware of that might be going on?
Tomorrow election day. Thank you, Lisa, and all the staff to prepare for a big day. So we appreciate you.
Thanks, Heidi. And I think the board echoes that. Um, future agenda items? We'll have some coming through plan, um, for sure. And I'm sure there'll be others that Larry already mentioned, uh, the, the, uh, issue with some of the green space, we'll be covering that. Um, there'll be some ordinance things bubbling through, I believe.
The public hearing for the budget.
Yep.
And, uh, potentially the, um, we should have, uh, the police union contract for consideration as well. And potentially some, uh, developer agreements.
Thank you, Matt. Anything from anybody else? All right, um, then we will, I'll make the motion for a closed session, uh, in, uh, for the village administrator's performance evaluation process. Uh, the motion is the village of Cottage Grove board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statute 19.85 parentheses, one parentheses, C, considering employment promotion, uh, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee, uh, over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibilities.
Second.
All right, we have a motion as second. This is a roll call vote.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Vander Velde?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
John, can you take the minutes from here? I'm a.
I certainly can. Get some sleep.
Thank you.
Good luck, Lisa.
Thank you.
Good luck, Lisa, tomorrow.